All right, make sure everybody's mic is on. If not, I'll call the meeting to order if we can stand for the pledge, follow my moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, you all have the rule call.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Walter.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Alguier.
Here.
Chairman Yoder.
Here.
All present.
All right. Thank you. We can have approval of the agenda. Any late additions or deletions?
I believe the approval of the agenda is presented.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. Public comment? Maybe.
Um, I just want to be sure that everyone knows we need the budget workshop screen live. We're all about being transparent, let's be transparent. That's all.
All right. Any other public comment? Mr. White.
Hi, Jim White from South Bay. I wanted to just say that I've been following the proceedings that go on around the budget since they started. And I have to say that on basis of what I've seen and what I've heard and my constituents as Republican Party membership and other people in this county who are taxpayers of this county aren't exactly pleased by what they're seeing. Okay? And the last time we had, you guys had a meeting, there were some undertones that I didn't think were appropriate. In fact, uh, it seemed like there was some old business that was coming up in that female members of this government were being treated differently than male members. And I don't like seeing that. And I think I'll tell you that my constituents don't like it either. Bottom line is that we expect to see some significant, we being the constituents, I'm speaking for them, this is just not me personally. We'd like to see this county taking some significant steps to reduce spending over time, not continue to increase it. I'd like to see that happening in this proceeding, if that's at all possible. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Yes, sir.
David K. Son's very thankful. We'd just like to, uh, listen to the budget meeting, okay? All you people who work on the front there, I want to know, do you all know what budget means? What I've seen prior to this board here is one before. I don't think they did. I mean, they spent like drunk and sub soldiers. That's why we're heading for a deficit. So know what budget means, save the thing you are means, not come to us and draining our checkbooks. That not only comes from me, it comes from a lot of people I talk to and some very thankful, little thankful. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? All right, thank you. Next up, we're to Commissioner Comment. Any Commissioner Comment? Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I, I would like to say that, um, we, the, we were sent a motion that was approved in 2021 by, by the commission. Four of the members from that commission are here on this board. And we have ignored that completely. I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't livestream, but what I'm saying, we have to go through the proper procedure. It should have been a motion, it should be discussed, and then it, by a vote of this board, be approved, and then we livestream. Until that, we overturn that motion, that we had, we should follow that. I mean, that, that has always been, if the board makes a decision, until it's overturned by another board, that decision holds. So I would say that we need to stop. If we're going to follow our rules and our procedures and our protocol, we need to turn off this streaming until it comes to this board, it's approved, and we say we want to livestream. Otherwise, you know, I, I would say then, otherwise, we're giving one commissioner the, the, the authority to override a previous commission. And I, I don't think that that, it should be allowed, ever allowed. And I also say that if, if, if one person can change our agenda and add things to it, then how come we, after a moment of silence, we don't have private prayer on this agenda? Because it's on all our other ones. Yet it's not on there because it was approved by a different commission that, that said that. But when we went through our organizational meeting, we, we had the option to add this to the livestreaming to any other agenda. It's always been, it's been on these three, it's not been on any others, it hasn't been on the committees, it hasn't been on anything else. It is recorded and it is put on. So we are, are being transparent. But what we're not doing is we're not following the normal protocol for how things are done. We're allowing one commissioner to, to make decisions for us, and, and it bothers me that our, our chairman and our administrator allow it to happen and didn't stop that. And when I objected, I was, I was, I was overlooked and disregarded. And to me, that makes me feel like a second-class commissioner by that happening. And I feel like, well, I don't feel, I, I know that we are not following the rules. We, we are not, we're, we're not understanding what the commission's authority, or a commissioner's authority is. So I would ask that we stop the streaming now, and if we want to do it, then we discuss it here on our board, and we vote to do it. But otherwise, I don't think we should have streaming going until we have approved it as a board.
All right, any other Commissioner Comments? Mr. Campbell?
Can we vote on it now? I mean, how, is that out of place?
You have to suspend your rules.
Well, I, I would make a motion that we suspend our rules. And, and we authorize livestreaming our budget sessions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been supported.
Motion, you, it can't be considered at the same time. You have to move to suspend the rules. Then you have to have a motion to take the, uh, take the issue up that would require the suspension of the rules.
So you're, you're, you're saying that I open my mouth for too long?
No, 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 no.
I would motion that we suspend the rules. I said it back.
But we already have a motion on the floor, so you got to withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion.
All right, so you have, so now your motion is to suspend the rules.
Suspend, to suspend the rules.
All right. Commissioner Bunny, support that?
I said it back.
All right. Any discussion on that motion?
The motion's non-debatable.
Oh.
Motion to suspend the rules is non-debatable.
All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero.
I would motion that we livestream our budget work sessions.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Discussion? Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I, you know, I initially objected to it because, because of how we were putting it in place. And also because I didn't, you know, I, I didn't want it to be, I noticed that when we ever, whenever we broke for a, a, a rest, people would come and be talking either to me or to the administrator, so I know employees were watching it livestream. And I do think that happens in here quite a bit. And so work is either not getting done, or it's, it's not being fully, um, looked at. But I've, I've talked with the administrator about it, he's, and, uh, he's assured me that he's going to look into it and, and try to make sure that that does not happen. So, uh, I, then I, I'm fine with what we're going to do.
Can I just take clarification? I just want to make sure that you set aside the board rules, and the only thing you're streaming is budget work sessions.
Adding to what we've done. The, the, our previous, uh, policies on streaming continue, we're adding to that our budget work sessions.
Okay, I just want to make clarification, because your previous live streaming are executive special session and, um, executive board. So you're adding budget work sessions. So no committees, I just want to make sure I'm getting this correct, because you're setting your rules.
That's all I, it's just particular.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Algar?
So I've always heard that women have the ability to do something that's tougher for them, and that is multitask. I am very, very confident that somebody could have our meeting in the background in their office. And if there's something of import, they may pay attention for a few minutes. But that they're going to be able to get their job done. Even because I know I would say, well, I'll listen to it tonight. Chances are doing that are slim to none. But I would rather our employees be informed and have the ability to check in than be blocked out. Anyway, people are multitasking. You've been sitting in dust for years, it's no big deal.
Mr. Robbins?
The issue I see is, I'm talking on past experience, I don't have a problem with elected. They have a right to, they're department heads, um, they're chief deputies, but when it comes to employees, they're here to do a job. They want to know what's going on, they can watch it just like everybody else at the end of their day. Because the problem I have from past experience is getting taxes from employees, white RBs are going on out of hope or what to say.
Ignore them.
I do, but still, that's inappropriate, you know, on, on their end. They got a job to do, and, uh, I think that's what they need to do, and, uh, they can watch it at the end of the night, or talk to the department heads, or the chief deputy, or the elected person.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, um, that the clerk was correct in saying that we were not supposed to be livestreaming. And I, I do, I do think that, you know, we all received that, what the, what the, um, what the commissioners voted on in 2021. And so when she brought that up, I think that that, she was correct in saying that we shouldn't be livestreaming it. So I also, um, just wanted to note that.
All right, any other discussion? I guess I, I'll just make a few statements here. I don't like, for us to, I don't think it's appropriate for us to sit here at a board or state that, you know, we don't approve of certain individuals watching, because I feel like, as a board, we're, our administrators are employed, nobody else is. And I just don't feel like it's important for us to micromanage beyond, outside of that, so. That's something I, I've been firm on, I think, from the beginning, that I don't want this board to go outside of our duties. And that's to give our administrator his job and what we want from him, and not, and, and stop there, I guess. So, um, that's how I feel personally, and that's what I, I want to state for the record on that. So I just, I want this board to stay within its rules here and not step outside of that. If we have an issue other than that, communicate with our administrator, um, and go from there, so.
I, I might just add, I think that's exactly what we'll do, is went to the administrator and, and brought up his concerns.
I agree. I agree. All right, any other discussion? Not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Carried seven zero. All right, any other Commissioner Comments? All right, if not, we are up to our action item. We have our treasurer and finance director on the agenda here for a presentation on our revenue summary, so take it away.
So good morning, everybody. This is, uh, Michigan New Financial Dashboard that is hosted by the Michigan Public Party. These are illustrations in a way, reports that are designated from an audited municipality's F-65. It's a report that is published to the state in a form that basically gives a summary of operations. We can look at all 83 counties and
You know what? Would you go back to that for a second?
Yeah, no problem.
Take a notice, but it just occurred to me. Thank you.
Got it. The link's also under our, if you go to the county website, there's a link on our website.
It's there too? Okay. Thank you.
Looking at the O.R. County, on the right-hand side of the screen there, you see the population of 23,000, and this is for 2024. We only have 25 speakers today. And this was just updated a couple months ago. It shows the O.R. County budget for all county level operations to be 43,000, min. 310,000, and expenditures to match. If you look at the snapshot, the total taxable value, we're at 3.95 billion. Our uncolored pension is reported at 5.72. The total general fund expenditures, total general fund revenue. You can see we have a slight surplus last year. The general fund's unrestricted balance is about 46%. The long-term debt, 5.7 formula, is trending downward. Our general fund cash ratio is out to be discovered. We'll get into that in a moment. General funds, if we get down to analytics, here's how they rank us based on a scale of 1 to 100, indicating 100 being a strong position and 1 being a weak position. If we look down here, we're not, you know, in the top, you know, 100 for our general fund ratio. We're not in the top, uh, for our, our general fund cash balance. Our pension health is 31st out of 79, our net position is 29th out of 78. And partly of that is, uh, we don't report all our assets, um, on the balance sheet for, I don't know if we have county parks improvements and stuff like that. That's why I went to Kathy up here, is the quality of statements. We don't have land as an asset on our books anymore, do we?
Nate, our underdepreciation schedule isn't full. And we refer to the audit document to see if that is picked up as a capital asset.
I like, we'll have to just, you know, look at that in detail. But today, what we're going to look at is the revenues. For the O.R. County, broken down by funds, we can look at different segments. The general, that's what we'll get through there. And on the general fund, the 20.63 that was reported on our F-65, where did that come from? 64.38 is tax revenue. Federal grants, which include car rentals, 12.23.
I would sure like to be able to see this.
You can pull it up on your tablet yourself.
Could you give us a chance? So go to our website?
Sure.
Because this is just little stuff here.
Yeah, I apologize.
So this is on the State of Michigan website?
Yes, sir.
So I'm on the cover, and I saw everything, and how did, how'd you get to this page then?
All right, so if we go back.
But it's on our county website, he says.
Yes.
Yeah, if you go to leilunacod, under the treasurer.
That's a better place to access it.
Treasurer. Yeah, but help if. Just treasurer leilunacod?
I will.
Okay, and then go to what?
The financial dashboard.
Thank you.
All right, so top left right here, you want to make sure you're on 2024 fiscal year. You're going to want to highlight the county outline, the O.R. And then it'll pop up in the right tab. Right through the page is the, um, revenue expenditures, as reported by the F-65. I went to revenues, hit explore, and it brings up basically, where is it from, how is it spot, the O.R. County, the broken down. We're going to look at the general fund. Everybody following? So I pulled up tax revenues, those along, you want to look at all the time. Show you that we have 9.31. That is for fiscal year 10, 2010. And since then, we have increased to 13.28 for 24 fiscal year.
And that's mostly because of hometowns, isn't it?
So going back to the general fund. Snapshot. Switch it back to snapshot, and then demo phone. Federal grants, I was saying, went to public safety and included with the car rental. We're not going to have that moving forward. State grants, state grant reassuring makes up a significant portion of it. Along with state grants for health. And then other, um, aid grants.
How did you get to that?
I'll take a pause here. Basically, what we need to understand in this process is when we allocate the mortgage and the tax revenue. We don't start collecting any of that revenue until July. We have to make that work. So our fiscal year reflection is July. We don't get everything in until March. So it makes up. February for everybody else, and then we get a little bit, you know, part of ourselves. So when we do have a fund balance, and you brought a report at 1231, the remaining fund balance is what we need to finish the year until we collect. So when we use fund balance forward in any of our funds or operations and stuff like that, we're reducing our ability to use that future. And it may be timing. So timing is part of the CIP. And working with Kathy, who's in the treasurer's office, and with the board to adopt and to plan out when to tackle these projects. Because we are flush in August, we have quite a bit of money there. But as the year goes on, we draw that down, and we have to account for that. If we put all of our expenditures in first quarter of next fiscal year, we don't have a lot of resources to draw on. So we're using investments and money market accounts to fund these projects. Working together, we can find a lot of room, not only for better efficiency, uh, better cash management, but also understanding, you know, the picture, understanding, you know, what makes up your general fund budget. I guess 64% is general fund taxes. Interest and rents came up, and it's 400,000. I believe that's mostly my 664. So that's money markets, all that stuff. We weren't planning that, but we used it to make and make. And I keep that budget low when I present revenues, because one market might change, you may flip. You know, we don't have a CIP, you know, and I made that, we have earn interest on that. There's so many unknowns that I can't tell you that I'm going to make you 400,000,000. We're drawing our funds down. That's going to get smaller and smaller and smaller. But we're using it today. If you look at the last budget, we increased it. Why? Because that budget's low and the revenues are kind of exceeding that. So we're today to our. But we've used that increase in the revenue to offset the expense. And that's where we, as a board, get to have a better understanding of how we approach these things. That would be, to Jim's point, he wants the budget lower. And I agree that, just to an extent, we could increase the revenue projections.
But you're talking about property taxes.
Property taxes, interest, stuff that we, you know, can speculate. And I think to Jim's point, yes, that would reduce the fund balance forward, that would also reduce the need for contingency, et cetera. But when we budget full exposure and we modify our existing budget to accommodate that, you know, upcoming year. So if we, for example, made expenditures in 2025 that we're going to pay for with a levy that has to last us 25 through 26, that is eating up our future use of those funds. And it was the board's choice, and they, and they didn't, but I don't think you guys understood the consequences. That was like next year's money that we paid for, you know, the raises. There's a lot of transparency and communication that we, as a group, offer. And, and through these budget sessions, if you drill down and understand, you know, what the tax revenues look like, you know, and what the grants look like. And, you know, the offer, you know, I don't have much to present other than this. We bring in tax revenues. We overestimate, um, our general fund, um, collection. We overestimate our general fund collection to an extent to absorb for like a 3% increase usually, or what was?
Two and a half to three.
Yeah. Yep, and when the next year's levy and taxable is identified. So for 2026, we will identify in this frame what the levy will be and what our tax will be. You guys approve of that. Then it's Kathy and finance, you know, to adjust that, amend that budget. And, but I don't know, Kathy to me, when you, in the past, was it practice when we did increase those that we would reduce the fund balance forward?
Yes, yes. And anticipating this conversation, I did go back and picked up adopted budgets from 2018 through 2024 to get a better idea of when we are budgeting. You're balancing your revenues against your expenditures. So if you know your revenues are going to be x for your property taxes, which we can tell by taxable value during, with current tax rate, we put what we know in the budget and to balance, we mean, we use fund balance forward. So you have a balanced budget against your expenditures. In 2018, to balance your approved budget, you approved a fund balance forward use of just over a million dollars. In 2019, you approved 1.2 million of fund balance to balance your revenues against your approved expenditure budget for that calendar year. 2020, it was just shy of 875,000 to balance your revenues. That's what you know versus what you are going to, you approved to expend. 2021, it was over a million. 2022, it was 1.6 million. 2023, 1.5 million.
Are you including ARPA?
These are the adopted budgets for each of these years.
But you're including ARPA funds.
No, yeah.
Good, thank you.
In 2024, just shy of a million. Then if you look at your fund balance forward that I have provided to board in an email. If you actually look at fund balance in that same timeframe, going from 2018, you thought you approved in the adopted budget to use more than a million dollars. In 2018 to 2019, you actually increased your fund balance by 200,000. So your revenue that you did realize was sufficient to reduce the lean on fund balance to the point that you have surplus and you built your fund balance. You agree? So this is a funding tool, and I just read in my MGFOA class yesterday about fund balance, how much should I hopefully even have? It is used for governments like ours, county governments, to balance your approved budget for the next fiscal year because of timing of your property taxes. They, and we collect in advance. We collect now in 2025 for the year 2026. But we're not going to get all that money until January, February, March and the settlement of DTR in April or May. So to get you a balanced budget that you can approve for operations going into '26, you balance by using your fund balance forward. Now, how much is a good fund balance? How much should you have? In going through your risk tolerance, you do need to know your upcoming, how much savings you feel comfortable with. The MGFOA says for small governments, they have seen 30% to 50% targets. And if we use an 18, I'm rounding our proposed budget right now. We're not done with it, but if I round our proposed budget, general fund, 18 million. A fund balance would be 9 million if that is where this board feels comfortable maintaining your savings account, which is your fund balance. MGFOA also says very small governments can be 30 to 50. I did 30% calculation. That would put it at 5.4 million. You're currently sitting with just shy of, and I just opened my papers. You're currently sitting with a fund balance in the $7 million range. Just shy of 8 million. So you are between the 30% and 50% target. Very large governments might only have a 5% to 10%, 1.8 million. That would make us around, you know, very minimal. I don't think any of us would feel comfortable with a small fund balance because we need the cash flow to help us get to the next tax collection. And then that GFOA, in its best practices document, which was referenced by your speaker the other day, they say two months. So I did a two month on 18 million. That'd be a $3 million fund balance. That's not sufficient. So you do want to maintain a fund balance that is sufficient to help you balance to get to your next tax collection. So.
I agree with the math, we're at 46% to that.
Yeah, so we're between the 30% and 50% that MGFOA is recommending. I think that that's comfortable. You will use it to balance this budget. But as we know, and you can, we can have theoretical conversations about, gosh, where do we think our taxable value will go? Where do, you know, it is a crystal ball issue. But we have traditionally budgeted conservatively, used fund balance forward to balance the budget so we can spend. Our first expenditures will be January 2nd this year. It's a payroll. So we need to be ready to go with a operational budget. Does that help?
Yeah, when is it supposed to be 40% or 50% or whatever percentage it's going to be? Are you talking January 1st or December 31st?
I'd probably July. Or June 30th.
June 30th.
Well, and your fund balance, you carry that annually. It balances your assets and like.
So that's when you're talking about this percentage should be? In June or July, not at the end of the year?
No, because at the end of the year, we've got 2/30 of flex.
Okay.
Actually, we have an order stated balance for the moment.
Right.
John, I'm looking at page one of our big budget book for its executive summary. And the current taxes were for '24 were listed at 12, 7, 7, 6, 2, 6, 4. And then for '25, it's 13, 3, 8, 5. What, how do we, how do we account for the change and what's that based on?
Well, we take '24, we do a 2%, 3% increase. And we push that forward to the '25 budget because all the things we guaranteed. The minimal increase in taxes that are allowed. So we budget based off of that. Previous year's taxable to reduce this period of speculation. If I suppose it's going to be 3.9 billion or 4.3 billion. We must deal with you and overstating our resources.
And then in May of this year, when the taxable value was brought forward by utilization, they have a rollback mileage. I did a budget amendment to reduce the impact of the fund balance forward. Put the actual levy in of what's on John's warrant, which is 13 million 685. And then when John submitted his revenue figures for '26, he put the full of '26, or excuse me, the total revenue he's collecting now on his warrant as current taxes. Current taxes, and this is where he has a delinquent 2.5% figure that he laid into this budget, which.
It's accurate.
And then what we'll do is in May of '26, we will get another final number from the utilization. A new kind of rollback. We'll have done the budget again in '26 and lessen the impact of the balancing act. I don't need to use it of the butt and reduce the impact of the balance forward. And if you were to look at the document that I gave you with regard to fund balance forward, and if we look from 2014 going forward on the general fund, and that's in the lower left-hand corner, from '14 to '15, fund balance did decrease. It decreased in '16. It decreased in '17. It went up in '18, up in '19, down in '20, up in '21, up in '22. These are surpluses. You understand and you did not use fund balance forward. You use it to balance your budget for the purpose of adopting an expenditure budget for your next calendar year. '22 to '23, you had a slight decrease. But then '23 to '24, you have a surplus. And '24 and '25, you have a surplus again. I can identify the surplus in that you did not spend your full contingency line item, which you always won't have. You should have a budget for unexpected expenditures. And you did not consider making a typical extra contribution to MERS.
And that's where the bigger conversation is. We used to in the past have that dialogue at the end of the year and say, hey, we haven't adjusted interest yet, or we haven't adjusted this yet. We're going to adjust it and then we're going to pay murders on additional leverage.
Your projections though?
It's a fall decision, in the fall.
Your projections assume that there were no homes bought. I mean, no uncapped properties. So it clearly is a.
It's a fair amount. That's what we got last year. Well, let's work within that. If we go beyond that, it's speculative. I don't want to worry about that.
So we're maintaining a conservative outlook.
Yes.
Which is good.
Yes.
And the other process is if you wanted to reduce your savings account and go below a 30% to 50% target, then you certainly could budget and use fund balance. That is a board decision. Do you want to? But there's the comfort level of that savings account that you have that puts between each collection, one year to the next.
To your point though, if we had a comprehensive financial plan, like a CIP integrated with a five-year budget, we would be able to then manage our cash. Because we would know, well, fund balance is x, but we're only going to dip here, here, here. And you may actually have a surplus one year to be able to contribute to the pool. And we manage the fund balance that way. And that's kind of what you do with the fund balance forward. You're allocated just a little bit of this and a bit of that and rolling it in one moment.
I agree. We want to budget conservatively, but I also don't want us to be doom and gloom. Last week when we met, it almost sounded like we weren't going to be able to maintain our parks and keep our staff. And so we need to be realistic enough so that we can budget responsibly.
And I think your biggest asset is your human capital around here. People that work for the county. That's your biggest expenditures and major segments. And so, but then projects come involved. You know, DTR will be evaluated for surplus to see if a project should be funded. You can dare so that you maintain a healthy level of savings in your general fund balance. So this is, this is all good information. I think that we also, now we don't have crystal balls. We also are somewhat aware, but not always aware of taxable value assets that may come off the taxable and make sure it comes to mind. That might be significant.
We have a million dollar uncapped, that's going to swing and we have a regroup.
That will be on the DTR, or the DTR fund balance, which we watch that very carefully as well because that's a savings account that are involved in the tax issue.
And there holds the current surplus from previous years of interest and debt operating. Process. It has grown. Kathy has demonstrated on her sheets. But, yeah. And we had 340,000 surplus last year to tax.
If I may, it is a big balance. And I think your concern, and I think it's a legitimate concern, is although we may realize as a board and as officials that those revenues are going to come in higher, I think that's unacceptable. Because it's a balance, we can't ask you as a financial, as financial consultants to, on the revenue side, be more accurate unless we're going to be more accurate on the expense side. If you make one step on one side and you don't do it on the other, you set yourself up for calamity, if you will. If we have unexpected expenditures, if we have, if we have things that come up that aren't budgeted. So I understand where you're coming from. That makes perfect sense. I'm glad to have that conversation. I think it is important to understand that while our fund balance may be staying relatively stable, our expenses have not been staying relatively stable. So as a percentage of fund balance to expenses, I had run those numbers before and they have gone from 57% in the 2022 audit to 51% in the 2023 audit. I had 48%. I'm not sure where, if, as a matter of timing, 48 or 46 in our last audit. John, when you had come forth before, you had talked about structural deficits. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid here. Or at least, as Kathy points out, if you're going to reduce your fund balance, do it in an intelligent way, in a planning way, rather than approve budgets and make expenditures without realizing what you're doing to the long-term fund balance health.
And I also have, you know, is just an opinion that I don't think we should be paying operating expenses like payroll, supplies and stuff for fund balance. It should be for MERS contributions that were done. That would improve.
I agree.
So when we look at fund balance forward like that, we know what's in there.
And that's how you had to tell with your surplus from '24 and '25. Is that it was not the operations, like John is speaking of the wage assemblies, the supplies it was, you can identify it, that it was from the constant contingency. You can identify where it comes from.
Right, but as our expenses, it's like, it's like comparing how much money a family has in the bank for an emergency 10 years ago with how much they need in the bank today. That ratio has changed dramatically and it's changing for us. I say that over that period of time, I'm not referring that ours has changed dramatically. But over time, it is eroding. It has eroded a bit. And we just need to take that into account in our budgeting decisions.
And then there's a good one.
Go ahead.
Oh, and that's where, you know, we talked about the comfort level of 30% to 50% of your operational budget, which will go up every year. And then you would hope that your fund balance would follow so you stay in that 30% to 50% range for small government and the state of Michigan. So right now, you are in that range and if you had a surplus. A few years ago, I remember, we did have a surplus in DTR and 250,000 was sent to the general fund to make the MERS, the MERS extra contribution. So, you know, we're balancing the fund balances between the two large pots, so to speak. The 516, which is DTR, and the general fund.
And last week or before we asked, you know, that revenue probably could be a placeholder for more. And if we want to do that, we all have to agree with it because in the past, we isn't. Because in the past, we use the burners, we use it for heat pumps, we use it for all this stuff. And we're going to grow that down to sub-operating. So it's just about the transparency and working together with the ten. And having it from the administrator down to department heads, we're all on the same page and working towards the same goal.
And the fund balance savings account in the general fund, it is for operations where the fund balance in DTR, there's a comfort level for the treasurer to be able to pivot on that money to make the municipalities whole so that they have their operational money in the fire rescues, the libraries and whatnot. There's a comfort level there. And we could, there's no budget for 516. That's your fund.
Yeah.
So to do the same math, you know, like I can do with the general fund fund balance as a percentage of your operational expenditures, there is a comfort level. And John and Sarah know each year how much is traditionally some amounts that they pivot on. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's been up to 4.2 million. So we have to, and that was cut out like a week. We still have a lot. And, but like I said, we have Kathy. So 517, that averages four to three, three, four million. And I have a capital that I got to repay that's a million. If I don't have the cash, I got to go to the general. If the general doesn't have it, I got to go to the detail, which is a little tax efficient. It's fine. It's all freshly, it's stuff we can do. We've just got to be intentionally transparent and reactive. And so to bring the conversation back to me, today was supposed to be about revenues. We have very little to say about it. We can stay within our means, we have libraries, we work for our programs, are funded through our contracts.
Commissioner, Commissioner Elgar, she's had her end up for a while.
Actually, I just put it back up. I think it's.
Oh, go ahead.
I did some exploring on the website, and not on the revenue side, but on the expense side. You can do a per capita expenditure by function. And I think it'd be helpful for this board to see by function how much we're spending and compare that with all other counties that might resemble us. Because when I did it, it looked like some were maybe underfunded and some were maybe overfunded. And it was at least the good information I look at.
Well, from a management standpoint, I mean, you're looking at efficiencies, you're looking at efficacy, you're looking at, you know, just public administration. You have the public trust. You want to make sure your facilities are doing their job. One thing we never do is measure ourselves because we're an island.
We don't want to be the bottom expenditure per function, but we don't want to compare ourselves and be the most expensive function either. So if it's okay, I would like to ask that we request that we get all of our functions and our per capita expenditures and maybe all the counties north of 10, 20. Would that be okay?
No, no line. I think it'd be not necessarily all counties, but counties that resemble us in the greater area here, you know.
Well, who's that?
It's simple. You go.
And this dashboard is available. You can pull up any county you want, which we do in our office quite often. You look at Antrim is kind of our size, but you look at their general fund expenditure budget. And, you know, we're about 18 million, so you don't want to compare us against a county that has 100 million in our budget. It's very different.
Well, I mean, if you do a grant service, you still have, not sure. You have a county of 96,000 people. You have revenues and expenditures. That's interesting. They must have. But you're able to make, you know, say, well, if they can do like a function like the treasurer, they can do 96,000 citizens, persons, would stay on their county the way you do. They can do it for X amount of dollars. Why is John going on this one? Hope he's doing that one too first. Is there just, is there just agile tools to measure and measure? Maybe just like ask the department, what is different? That'll help you justify their expectations for overtime travel. That, I think, is the part of the discussion that could aid everyone in getting a better handle on how to find tune in the budget. You've got to have something to render against to drive them out to a correct decision. If we never look at ourselves in the year, how are we making these decisions?
And when we do the per capita expenditure, it kind of balances out the population differences. That's what I would like to see.
So one of the things that, as we talk about your funding and the balance that we have, I have to remember and I have to remind everyone that we still have people who donated their share of the ARPA funds to the rest of the county trusting that if they needed funding so they would get broadband, the county would be here. And the B grants have not yet been announced. But it's not a good story that they gave their money to everyone else and everyone else shuts them out and says, well, sorry. We appreciate your donation. You're screwed. I don't want that to be a story. And I'd be very willing to write that letter to the editor. So we have to keep that in mind as we consider the fact that our balance with you is high. Yes.
I would suggest that if that could be ascertained as to the amount would be needed overall, it would be allocated through the CIP and phased in one year of contract could be obtained. And if the funding.
I don't think it has to be on the CIP because the rest wasn't. We don't have to put it on.
But we're using internal funds. You're not using ARPA funds.
Okay, but I don't want it restricted. Don't tell me that it has to go on the CIP.
Well, it can't, it would have to be, it would have to be a project of the board.
Yes.
Put it on the board.
So I would be willing then to make the motion that it be on the CIP right now. But it sounds like you're telling it, you've got to give it a line.
May I just interject one thing? And that is, this is a project for which Leon County does not own the infrastructure. I do not believe that we can put it on the CIP since this is, these are independently owned lines for which we have no long-term control. So I just don't think you could, I don't think, it's not a fixed asset that we own.
We're kind of digressing from our.
I just needed to make that point that we don't forget, guys.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, and the CIP, that's already passed and done. I think that'd be something that should be on next year's. Because that's, I mean, there was a deadline we gave department heads to submit to the CIP. And I don't think, you know.
Kangol, who didn't ask us. Just don't forget, everybody.
Commissioner Money?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the budget, the expenditure summary. And I'm not quite understanding how it works. Because it talks about the budget role, you know, from 2025 to 2026. And then it talks about department changes or requests. Some of them, some of those numbers look like the requests for the full budget and others look like the changes. But I don't know which ones are which. I mean, is.
The column it is going to be looking at is the far right and changes or requests. So we'll take the first line. The board commissioners department, right now, the adjusted budget for '25 is at $880,000. The predominant department change request of 811 reflects the current staffing level of that department.
Okay, but my question is, are we adding 811,000 to 879,000?
No, no.
That's, I don't think so. But then if you go down to, to, let's just say, you know, some here where you're adding, it's a whole different number and completely, you know, changes. So what is 2020, the one where it's 2025 rolled to 2026?
That was what the ARPA heads looked at when they got their budget packets. And they said, gosh, you know, my budget, my limited budget for '25 is this amount of money. I need to have that for travel. I need to, you know, it was just a small amount, you know, or a large amount. It's in their narrative. So it is reflective of the 20. The department change far right column reflects the projected budget for '26. That is reflective of the current staffing level, approved contracts for.
So some of them are lower, some of them are higher, some of them are exactly the same. But really, the budget we're looking at is the far right column.
It is. If you look at the last page, it's at 17.5. And your revenues using fund balance are the same, 17.5. So your revenues are, your proposed expenditures are this one.
Okay. So we're looking at overall projecting lesser budget than if we had just rolled over 2025.
Now, your budget in '26, we'll, I just gave you the updated schedule. And I added this section on page four to tell you what wages are included in the '26 budget and what are not. So what is included is the Teamster because it was ratified and done early in '25. So we did pick up those wage increases of 3%. It is baked into the budget. Your FPLC contracts through Corrections, Road and Dispatches are not included in the '26 because they were just recently ratified except for one. And those will be baked in when we do a final proposal for you. I gave you an estimate that with these contracts, it will probably be increased. I don't know the end result of dispatcher, but we're going to be somewhere between a $85,000 to $100,000 increase to put in those wages and the new retention schedule that was adopted in those negotiated contracts. Another item that is not baked in is your POAM. The negotiations will be starting soon. So we may know more as we go forward. And what is also not baked in, and it's usually the last wage increase that the board will correct us to do, is what you want to turn on in the wage schedule to look at for '26. It's usually the last to be about. So I just wanted to bring those, that page to your awareness of those numbers are not baked into this budget. So there will be an additional lean on fund balance, balance, because your expenditures are going to go up. Every time you make a decision on operational budget, at this point, your lean on fund balance is going to get bigger. Historically, to adapt a budget, we have done a fund balance forward lean of a million dollars roughly, over by average. But if you fix your fund balance forward on general fund, so I'm giving you new penalties for losses in that, you lose fund balance. In the end, when we amend the budget for the realized revenue, that will come when we get equalization. It will come when we get the military for '26, for '26, which is clearly to '27, probably use the cash. So it is, it is a cyclical process. It is one where the board, and I was very happy that we are in the 30% to 50% range for small government that have done balance on the general fund. And we're closer to an operational budget than you think. Because if you look at that summary I'm giving you, we have just a few items that are actually general fund expenditures. The rest of them are all capital projects. And we could get to the point where your operational budget is hammered down pretty quick. And then you can take and discuss per capita projects you'd like to look at for '26 and how you're going to promote.
The problem, of course, is if you're zeroed out on your general fund budget, all you have is your delinquent tax to fund your CIPs. And if you look at our CIPs, I didn't have them all up. I mean, there's multi-million dollar expenses there. So it's one thing to say, okay, we funded our operations, but we didn't fund our future. And you can't just fund your operations without looking at your future. So I think that's being a little, and no offense, but I mean, I think that's kind of a rosy picture to say, well. Again, no offense, because I know you understand this and that, and what you said is exactly true. But for us as a commission, I think you have to look at it and say, some of these CIP expenses, I mean, are overwhelmingly expensive compared to the revenue that we are going to have to pay for.
That's why we've always gone very, very slowly on CIP stuff.
Some of this stuff I don't think is going away though.
And the Chill Tower and the console projects, they are in your combined budget. They're probably not going to happen this year.
Right.
Those have transfers out of DTR already been launched. So if we put that into the '26 budget because they might start this year, that's a mechanical process, basically. Because we know that that is a project that's underway. Another of the one, big ones on here is this new radio system. This is where you might do a lease purchase and you use Motorola's money, not ours.
Like you did last.
Like you did last time. It's got it out over a number of years. I think the last project, it was for over 10 years and it only lasted seven. Kind of like your Apple phone.
We can provide you with financing scenarios to get the commercial lines or something like that. They're a little very.
The Leon Dam, is that definitely a '26? I mean, I don't know.
We can put which part in the.
Leon Dam maintenance, $280,000.
Yeah, I think he's looking at the CIP.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And that's not on this list. We have a question about that because I'm not sure what that really is about on the CIP. And we can't find the origin document to understand what is that.
We do have an inspection schedule.
We have been reading the dam in the last few years. We put in a diagram. They're doing a survey, a diver survey coming up to look at the health of Leon Dam. So there's a question as to the origin and what is that request?
Commissioner Wessel?
Well, and Kathy said we're almost there on our budget. But since I've been on the board, how we do the budgeting is we just take where we are and then ask the question, what do we need to add? And that's why I'm asking for that efficiency stuff. Because I don't think just asking each department, can you hold a line or you need something else? Is the way to do it. I think it's take a look at, are there some efficiencies we can build in? And really make some significant increases for our capital improvement planning. And maybe some efficiencies in our departments. And I'm not saying we ought to look at all of them, but I do think we haven't looked, at least in my 10 years here, about how expensive our departments are, or aren't, compared to what other programs that are doing. compared to what other programs that are doing a very good job are doing. And I think we need to do that.
And I think you had a schedule, Lauren is maintaining a schedule of department heads to come before you. And I'm not sure in the sequence of meetings when that starts, that Jim and Lauren will throw you in on a couple of these people.
Commissioner Allen?
You know what, this has just been bugging me. On the thing that you handed out today and in previous things, it says lunchroom conversion to exercise room. That's never been discussed here.
That is in the narratives from the Buildings and Grounds Department. It was a request and that's in the section called supplemental.
So we haven't made that decision.
No, it was a request from the department head.
I think we need a vote of all the people in the, I mean, it's nice to have a lunchroom. I think we need a vote of everyone here about whether they really want to use their lunchroom.
Well, it'll come to that. We'll have a discussion on that when we get to that department head, so.
Yeah. Yeah. How many people do you say is exercise room 25?
If you don't mind, I got some questions just as far as the, the revenue summary, just going through these, the, especially the current taxes, just looking at from 2022 audited all the way to 2024 audited. A quick question as a side note, do you have, or is it easy, would it be easy to put a column in there, what was budgeted for 2025?
I could get you that.
That way, because then we could compare, okay, what was budgeted and then what was, what did we have to amend? So we know, okay, we did something, you know, yeah, we budgeted low and we overspent, so we know how to budget this year type of thing, I think it'd be wise.
Well, you budgeted two-year warrant and you adjust in the spring to the new.
Right, no, but I'm talking about the whole revenues side of things, what we budgeted for.
He's looking for the original budget.
Right, the original budget that was approved last year to compare to what we actually so far year-to-date and what we amended for. Well, it'd just be another column on this revenue summary, just another column.
Yeah, what I can do is give a one through seven revenue summary and they'll include a column for approved budget.
Right, that was, but that way we know what was budgeted and then what we had to amend, so we know kind of where we're going type of thing.
I can send that to you in a PDF and I'll contact you on the D I S for next week.
Okay. And then just to continue on that, then for like the current taxes, as you see in the 2022 audited all the way to 2024 audited, we, every time we went up over a million. And then for 2025, it's looking like we're, you know, a little less than a million, but then for what we're budgeting is even less than that. What's the, you know, I get you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I read Section 15, 1D of the Michigan Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act. It, the recommended budget shall include at least the following, Section D, an estimate of the revenues by source of revenue to be raised and received by the local unit. What we're doing is we're simply rolling over last year's budget. We are not doing anything, anything sort, any close to an estimate of what our revenues are going to be. And if you look at the history since 2022, you've gone up at least half a million dollars, sometimes a million dollars more than you budgeted. You budgeted $2,754,000, $2,754,000 in your 2025 budget. You've already amended it to 13,000, 13,385,000. The, the, the equalization report that you received in May projects 13.7 million dollars in 2027 taxes. The idea that you budget to the warrant is not accurate. The Budgeting Act requires that you make an estimate and that estimate has to be based on something. And if you are under, if you are habitually underestimating your, your income, which is based somewhat out of your control, because it is based on, on, on property tax, taxable values and uncappings of property that are going to occur after the equalization report that you got in May. So the idea that you simply roll over the budget from one year to the next underestimates your, your, your income and then skews what you can do with respect to your budget on the expense side. And it also skews what you can do with your budget in terms of reducing taxes. So doing that does not give you an accurate picture of what your, what your budget's going to be, and we are not following the Uniform Budgeting Act if we do just that. And I agree with the Treasurer with respect to things like interest income. We had, what was, what was your interest income, what's your interest income to date? It's close to $500,000, I believe. And you're proposing a budget of $25,000. The question you need to be asking is not why is he only proposing $25,000, but what could you do to give him the ability to make sure it's $500,000 and can accurately budget that dollar amount instead of saying, I don't know, I don't know what it's going to be because I don't have control of the cash. And the final thing that I will say is describing your fund balance as a savings account is 100% inaccurate. It is not a savings account, it is not what you have in the bank. The fund balance, if you were running a business, it would be your retained earnings. Your retained earnings may not reflect what your actual cash in the bank is, so it is not a savings account. It is a budgeting account and you're, a lot of what you've heard today is confusing the difference between budgeting and cash flow. Those two things are completely different. Budgeting is estimating what your expenses and revenues are going to be. Cash flow is what you have in the bank and when you can use it. Two different things. So.
My recognition.
And I'm responsible. You appointed me as your chief finance, as your, as your, as your budgeting official under the Uniform Budgeting Act, and I'm responsible for the budget that you adopt, not John, not Kathy. And I don't, I don't want to see a budget that underestimates income. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on getting you a better, a better estimate of what the income's actually going to be.
Well, and that, with that being, I mean, that was some of the questions I have in here, just, you know, one was, I mean, I highlighted a bunch of columns in here that I was going through, I mean, over the last week and the day and yesterday, and I mean, just going through some of the questions that I had that I wanted to ask as to why are we budgeting this? You know, because it's, some columns were going way up from what we historically have and some were going way down from what we historically have. So I was just curious what some of the changes were. And one was the current taxes, you know, I, historically, we're going up almost a million every year, but yet we're going way low. And I understand conservative, you know, you want to stay conservative on those numbers type of thing, but.
That's okay. Thank you.
I would agree with Mr. Dyer, but we have been using the revenues as a placeholder for the unknowns because of the lack of transparency and the lack of ability to work with cash with the board. So underutilizing the revenue in the budgeting process allowed for the reduction of fund out forward use at the end of the year. That's practically how it's been done for 20 years or more or less. I would not be opposed to adopting and having a conversation with this board about increasing the budget for interest and for property taxes. But with that, to Mr. Campbell's point, is there has to be better accountability on the expenditure side with timing. These are two different conversations, but they have to be developed in tandem. Mr. Dyer, I agree with you and I think that these are good conversations to have.
Okay, well, then the other column is like the National Park Tax Reimbursement. Like we went from 2022 to 100, you know, almost 122,000 to 2024 audited, a little over 138. And year-to-date, we've had 142, but we're budgeting 135. I guess what's, what's the, are, are we expecting that to go down? Is that the reason? Okay.
6902 and 6904, these first ones. 6904 is a subsegment where when the National Park purchases an at-large piece of property, it will be on the tax list for five years before it comes off. And in that, it is a reduced payment, but they calculate it to give it to us through 69 or 4, we disperse it back to those tax collections. 6902 is the allocation for the National Park. So that is an allocation that the Department of Interior randomly moves the needle up or down per acre. And that's what we get paid on.
So if we're, so in other words, we're estimating that we're going to get less than what we.
Unless they buy more property, which we don't.
So we're going to get even less next year than what we have this year from year-to-date is what the estimate is, you think? Like that's what I'm trying to get to, to try to figure out where these numbers came from, I guess.
Yeah, I would say that 6902 is solid, the best side of the change, but just minor fracture. 6904 is going to be taken out, but it's, it's merely a pass.
Okay. Yeah, because then like local community stabilization, I know that's a very small amount there, but, you know, again, we're coming in way, we're doing substantially less than we even got in 2024 audited, you know, that's just some of the questions I had as far as, and then we got.
That's just appropriated from the state and we could.
Right. I totally get that. So, and then the other question, probate judge's salary on page two. We have, it went from 127 2022 to, I mean, it gradually increased, but all of a sudden this year, we, you know, we're budgeting substantial less. What's the reason for that, I guess? Is that what it is?
Don't they have a set piece?
It's an amount, that's an amount that the state reimburses to you for the salary that you pay. On the revenue side, that's what that is.
Okay, so that's just, that's expected to be less than, that's the reason.
And in second state.
Okay. The other question I had is for secondary road patrol marine safety program. We've, there's always been, from my, from what it looks like, 2022 to 2024, we've had money coming in, but we're budgeting zero for that and the reason for that, I guess.
We currently don't have a grant approved yet. We don't, we haven't been applied for the 26 grant yet for me. That's done in, I think it's when the Sheriff comes to you and applies, so we have no idea what they'll grant us. And secondary road, I believe it's on your agenda, it was, and it was submitted, so we still haven't run that number for 26.
But again, if we know. If we know we're going to submit a grant, we are required by the Uniform Budgeting Act to estimate what we think that revenue from all sources is going to be. If we habitually apply for a grant and we habitually get something, budgeting zero is not accurate.
Another one I have is district court costs, where we're budgeting way less than what we're, you know, gradually what's been coming in type of thing. I, I, you know, those are just some questions I had as to, you know, the reason why, you know, but then for instance, like some of the items, you know, we got, we're, we've been having less come in, but then we're budgeting more for it. But that's just, yeah. And I don't know, should I write those questions out? Because I highlighted a ton of them in here, you know, as to why, you know, and I don't want to bore everybody just going through line by line, but maybe that's something I should.
On page two, revenue sharing is from the state, John Serre put that under there and it's a state projection, so we use that state projection. That's higher.
Right. Yeah, no, that, I mean, that's just some of my questions, I guess, but. Five-minute recess?
Good idea.
Okay, we'll take, if we can take a quick five-minute recess, we can go over. All right, we're back in session. Can't remember where we left off. Was I going through or did?
I asked you a question for a second, but you know, today was about presenting the dashboard of revenues. And that's pretty good. Kind of go around yourself and obviously, you know, some of those metrics that we presented with Sarah and Kathy and across the Catholic function. What would the next steps be for this, this group? When working with Jim, we can readjust the interest and projected tax revenue. Is there anything else that I can help as far as the revenue side?
Commissioner Bunnycat has his hand up.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I just think that maybe we could start with the revenue and go through and, and do the projections. Do we do that or do we just wait, let you go through and change them? But I mean, yes.
Go ahead.
I think what we owe you as a, as an administration is a reasoned, data-driven recommendation for each of these. Some of them will be easy because again, we may have a projection from the state as with respect to revenue sharing. Some of the others will be more complicated like the property tax estimate. We owe you a, we owe you a significant description of where, you know, what that, what that recommendation is based on, not just a guess, you know, because I could say, for example, you've had it for the last, since, for the last three years, you've had a 22% increase of property tax revenue, which equates to about a 7% compounded increase. We could just simply say it's 7%. I'm not satisfied that that would be the accurate thing to do, however. A lot of it depends, the data that we would want to look at is how many property, how many properties have been traditionally uncapped? We haven't really looked at that because you get 100% of that uncapping when it happens. So, and, and that's the only way you're going to be in a position to really evaluate what you can do with respect to tax reduction if you're really seriously looking at that as an alternative, is to know what your revenue is going to be. Because if they're underestimated, you're always going to look like you have a deficit when you really don't.
Well, in that, that would be great, then we don't have to go line by line, but you, you put the changes in here under work sessions as opposed to, you know, requests. Because actually that's, I guess that's what confuses me is that it says department changes are requests, when really, I believe that's the proposed budget. You know, so, so, you know, so then we would do the changes and then we would do that, we have to do that with expenditures, but I would like also go through the supplemental information. I guess I want to start working on the budget as, you know, it's great information, but I don't feel like we're moving forward with the budget, but I can, and that way we can look at if we can set money aside for interest, if we set money aside in capital improvements or whether it's the roof or what's going to happen. But I'd like to have, you know, I really like John's idea about having a five-year plan. I mean, it, it might be too much to do this as this first budget that we're working on, but I think we should work towards that goal, I really do.
Commissioner Cantel and Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, the, the five year is where you need to be for your cash flow. And, and I agree with Administrator Dyer that part of the discussion went through part of the cash flow and a lot of it went through simple year-end numbers. And they are going to help you in your cash flow. But we're not setting ourselves up to win any awards only because we had Rebecca here last week and we're still kind of in the weeds. What Rebecca said is the first thing you need to do in all this mandatory is provide a budget message. I understand where you're going as far as from administrative standpoint. It's our job too, though. It's our job to really, it's our policy that, that drives this budget. And we've not come up with a budget message, which would help our administrator, who's going to also be living with this budget as everybody else in there. So I, I don't know if that needs to be like number one on the agenda for our next meeting. I understand.
I understand that I'm new to this, and a number of us are, and maybe those who have been here have not thought of the budget in different terms, but I, I hear that indeed we are starting to look at it in different terms. So I'd like to see us work towards a budget message goals early, while recognizing that not all those goals may be accomplished this year, but we can start moving toward those goals.
Right, Commissioner Ollinger.
I, we have always been very, very, very conservative as we do our budgets, but I want to say I like, but that's a really lame word. It's a good idea to budget on what you're actually going to get instead of what you got last year. So I think that's an important change. And as we talked, it occurs to me, part of the reason for our big increase in the taxes coming in, which I realize have to balance prices and wages that have to go up and are going up, I sure hope we can, since a lot of it is because the increase in value of housing, the effect of that on our population is that people's children can't afford to live here. So as an offset to the increased money we get because housing has become more and more expensive, I think that's a really good reason to stick, to allocate some money to housing, 100,000, 200,000. But the reason we're getting so much more is making it unaffordable for our people, so acting to support our people and help people actually live here, so that the people who work here can be a part of our community, and your children can get married and live here and raise their kids. I think that's a, a goal we should have. I, he's standing up.
Just to facilitate that, I mean, Commissioner Dyer and I, we can talk about contract, it was long ago, to do a formal audit, and the board could contract and make an expansion for this. That's of course, Sarah, we-
I think that's an important, important need and should be on our list.
I think in 2024, there was an allocation from CDBG to Land Bank, and it's an excess of 100,000, so that has happened, as an example.
And we've done good things in Land Bank, but they need more capital.
Yes.
Land Bank meetings have been canceled because there's nothing there anymore.
I have property, I have more property.
Yeah. The good news is no one's foreclosed.
Commissioner Ollinger.
I would like us to accept Commissioner Campbell's challenge, and each of us draft a, a budget message for our next meeting and bring here, and we can all present our budget message, so that we all hear what everybody's thinking about how we ought to be spending and saving, and, and I'll accept your challenge. Did I challenge you? But I won't, I won't accept you writing the message for us.
Yeah. I wonder why. I guess, I figure based off the conversation we have here, administration can come up with a message, and then we can hash it out. That's not what I was hoping for, but let's, we need a list for everybody to-
I would have no problem receiving drafts or input from U.S. Board. In fact, I would expect it, but-
That's a good idea.
It, it all depends on what you want. If you want to work off a, off a draft, or work off, you know, suggestions, it's up to you. I'd take either, take either alternative, particularly since this is the first one we're going to do.
I like the idea of sending new ideas.
That's fine.
Is that clear with our commissioner here? Send our administrator language, and is that something you want to have at the next meeting to go over, or you just email it to?
I would just say email it to me, and, because really, the message in some respects comes at the end of the process, when you've done the work, that, that, it kind of recaps what it is that you, that you've accomplished.
All right, everybody has a task, then. Add a few more questions, just on the revenue side, on page five, and I had highlighted too, the interest earnings too, as well, so maybe go over that. Just on the miscellaneous reimbursements for 2022, we got a minus there. Do we actually bring less in than, maybe hopefully it's an error?
I can do a transaction history on that. I'll send it to you.
But then, like, for instance, donations, K-9 specific, like, nothing's budgeted for that. Totally understand that, because we don't have a K-9 anymore, so that, you know.
Then you're, you'd be regaining for an unknown donation amount.
Right, no, and I understand that part of it. There was just a lot of items in there that I had questions on, but if, if administration, everybody, according to Commissioner Bunnyk's request, just get that modified, I think that will put my mind at ease, so. Any other commissioners have questions, or suggestions, or comments regarding this? All right, what about you, John, Sarah, Kathy?
You know, just regarding the property tax issue, you know, it has been calculated as two numbers we know, and we are in discussion regarding theory, hypothesis, data, history for calculating a number to estimate the future. I'm, I'm about two conservative investment names, so if everything goes to gall in a handbasket, how would the impact affect us? I don't think that's going to happen. I think that it is a trend, we have higher in taxable value, but it has been budgeted for what you know, not for what you don't know or what you hope for. I think that's quite transparent, but we are in discussion regarding that. And then also, with regard to getting to expenditures, it might not be a bad idea for the board to consider our total operation, as Vice Chair Wessel mentioned, about essential services versus non-essential, because this campus does provide for prosecutor, sheriff, treasurer, registrar, deeds corps, the drain commissioner, these are essential and statutory, and then you have things that are not considered essential services that are part of your job. So just is something you want to keep in your mind as you're evaluating?
You know, it occurs to me too, Health Department is being, losing tons and tons of revenue, and some of those are services we may have to up our, our county contribution, Betsy and Russell, not a whole bunch, but some. They are the most frugal people in the world, and dance around on balancing a budget, and I don't know how they do it, it's, it's pretty amazing, but as we hone down to some very essential things, that will be cut. That's something to be, just, just clear it in your mind, that we may have to up our contribution a little bit.
All right, John, any closing?
No, I think this is a good conversation. We have traction, and we're going to work with Administrator Kathy to, to update the direction, to bring in that.
Oh, wow, look at that.
If you would look at your CIP as a red, because when I was looking at putting things on your worksheet for people, I basically looked at 26 and 27, and then I used the budget narrative from your department, that's how I did it. If you look out, 28, 29, 32, because it is up to you, your prerogative, if you see something that the planning commission recommended for out, but you feel it's more priority, and it's not on your worksheet, let me know. Because I did just the first two years, and I wrote much further out, but it's your process, your CIP, and your budget worksheet, so if there's something out further, maybe should be prioritized, if you know, I can add it for discussion.
I might add, speaking of challenges, that maybe we should be challenged to rate, to go through this CIP. The process might include having Administrator Dyer explain what, what are not, what would be required, what's on there that just needs to be there, and then having us go through and say prioritize our top 10, or whatever, because as you say, this, we've had no input into the CIP at all. I think, I understand that AI was used to create the one for parks and recs, so that, apparently that's how the, the paid parking lot for Veronica Valley got up ahead of others, that I think park commissioners would have changed. So, yeah, we need to, we need to involve ourselves into that process, and perhaps, as I say, the idea of X-ing some off as, you don't have choice on this, and then letting us go through and, and prioritizing our top 10 would allow the process to move into the CIP decision-making a little easier, and an easier, an easier entrance.
It is really appropriate to think of the CIP truly as a wish list, or a placeholder, or things that you may need to do at some point in time in the future. It's intended to be a six-year look forward, so there's nothing wrong with having something on there that you know you're not going to do unless maybe you get a grant or something like that. There's no, there's nothing wrong with that, but it is, what you're describing is really what you need to do for your operational budget, to decide which of those items you're going to do in the current, or in the coming, the coming budget year. So yes, I think we're on the same page about that.
I didn't understand what you said about the operation. You're saying, get your numbers, so you know how much money is available for the CIP, and then use the CIP to fill in the back hole, whatever amount is available.
Yes, yes, based upon your priorities.
Right, but first we got to have priorities, and before that even, we got to see how much money we might be able to extract.
Absolutely, absolutely, but, but you would have items like, whether you're going to have an exercise room that might involve converting the lunchroom, that would be, that's a good example of something that might be on the, on the CIP that you would consider at some point in time in the future, again, after there's a vetting of preferences and that sort of thing within, within the building.
Sure.
You know, also, if we are going to say we are tied down to what's on the CIP-
You're not.
Yeah, we're not.
You're not.
Yeah. Good, because, just because the CIP doesn't have the possibility, and we've, we've talked for years about the fact that we may have to go into your funding for, to cover the extra broadband, and that's been something we've talked about for four or five years. That was just a possibility we hoped would never happen, but realized that it might have to, so not being on the CIP. Give a whole, might you, because we, they never ask for our input.
I, I, I'm sorry, I got to say this. It's not just that southwest corner of Leonel County that advocated or gave their, if you will, their ARPA funds for this project, because I had, the villages all had services. What percentage of, wasn't it, I can't remember what it was, was it 80% of the county already had service? They didn't benefit from that.
No, 25% of people had, inadequate or none.
Okay, 75% already gave, if you will, their ARPA contributions to this project. So to think that, that the folks who already had service should give more to it, I don't, I just, I just don't believe that.
Well, now they have the choice of two.
We get press.
I don't, no.
All right, Commissioner Wessel.
It would be, I, I would like to have the administrator come back with, from the capital improvement plan, the things that must be done this year that he would, I think, I think there's some on here we don't have a choice on. Let's get that list, the shortlist, and, and then that goes at the top of the book. There is, yeah, mine room for that, because you got to.
Commissioner Ollinger.
Do you know what it's like to live in this world with nothing?
All right, figure us, Kathy, anything else?
No.
All right, Sarah, anything? Administrator, you have anything else you want to add?
I do not.
All right, just to be, I guess, look, so we're all on the same base, the commission for next Tuesday will be after executive session, from my understanding, for a budget, and is that at the point where we have some department heads coming in, or what's?
I'm not positive of what the next, I have to check with, with Lauren, and then I'll send an email as to what the, what the expect, what the expected items for that might be.
Okay, yeah, that way, you can just let the board know on that, so we can look through the department heads that are going to be presenting to us, we can go up, read through that, so we know which department heads are requesting, so we know some questions to ask, and stuff like that, so, just going to give it that, so.
What I'll do is email you a list of those departments that are scheduled.
Right, and when they're scheduled to come. Yeah, that'd be great. All right, thank you, Kathy and John and Sarah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to public comment. We have none, commissioner comments? All right, if not, return.